Thank you, Mayor. The Emeryville City Council met in closed session on the matter listed on the closed session agenda regarding item 5.1.1. An update was provided and direction was given. That's the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to adjourn out of this meeting at 6:46 PM. And now, let's begin our special study session for the city of Emeryville. I call this meeting to order at 6:46. Do we need to do a roll call?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowders.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Here.
And Mayor Medina.
Here. Can I get approval of the final agenda? All right. Moved by Member Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Pats.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right. Experté Communications for this item. I spoke with the developers from ONI.
As did I.
All right. And public comment for the agenda. We don't have one or items not on the agenda. Nope. All right. Study session on planning regulations, amendment for unit mix and design, and tower separation for high-rise buildings. Hey.
Hi. Mayor Medina, members of the City Council. I'm here to present a study session on high-rise regulations. An overview of what I will talk about. First, with regard to policies, high-rise building policies and regulations, specifically unit mix and family-friendly design and tower height and separation. Then, the effect of these regulations on the feasibility of high-rise buildings. The effect of the unit mix on the school district enrollment levels and performance. And if you're wondering why we're talking about the school district at all, I will get into that a little later in the presentation. Options for the council to consider, and finally, some discussion questions, which basically is what are the options that you like. I apologize in advance that my presentation may be a little lengthy. I'll go through it as quickly as I can, in light of the late start we're getting here. By way of background, back in October, the City Council, as you may recall, directed the Planning Commission to reconsider the unit mix regulations for buildings that are higher than what the California Building Code allows to be built out of wood, that is to say, high-rise buildings. The council at that time expressed a concern that our unit mix regulations might be discouraging developers from building needed housing, specifically in our high-density core area. And staff also identified the tower separation regulation as another thing that needs to be examined in relation to high-rise buildings. The Planning Commission held a study session on these issues on December 13th, and I will report to you the recommendations that came out of that study session. Starting with the general plan and its guiding principles, as you know, the general plan is based on 10 guiding principles. These guiding principles form the basis for all of the goals and policies and actions that are in the general plan. Everything flows from these 10 guiding principles. Guiding principle number 10 is "An Imagable and Memorable City." This is the full text of that guiding principle. I won't read the whole thing to you, but I do want to focus on one sentence, which says, "The city will foster a dramatic skyline of slender and elegant high-rise buildings, stepping down to low-rise buildings in the older residential neighborhoods." And this is a picture from the general plan that illustrates that guiding principle. The general plan also contains a number of goals and policies in the land use and urban design chapters, specifically regarding the skyline and high-rise development. I'm not going to read all these goals and policies to you, but this is just for reference to kind of underscore the point that there is a lot of policy basis in the general plan for the notion of having high-rise buildings in the core area. This is the height limit map from the general plan. The dark blue is where the high-rise buildings are permitted. Buildings over 100 feet tall are permitted in these dark blue areas, primarily here in the core area, as well as in the northwest corner and the southwest corners of the city and on the eastern end of the peninsula. This is a visual simulation from the general plan, or rather, I should say, a computer model from the general plan, that shows possible future development. These blue boxes are not intended to be actual buildings. They're simply illustrative of where future buildings could be and the size and shape of them under the general plan policies. And as you can see, there are a number of high-rises in the core area and in other parts of the city that are designated for buildings over 100 feet tall. This is one of the images that's in the general plan to help people kind of visualize what the city could look like in the future if all of the general plan goals and policies were realized. This is the heart of the core area. This is the intersection of Powell and Christie. And as you can see today, it's very suburban, lots of asphalt, not very pedestrian-friendly, lots of surface parking lots, and buildings are set way back from the street. The general plan has an image of what this area could look like if it were developed with the goals and policies in the plan. This is the same area after general plan build-out, much more pedestrian-friendly, transit-friendly buildings right up to the street, more generous sidewalks. And I would also note a couple of high-rise buildings that are illustrated here. I'd like you to just remember these two buildings for future reference, because I'm going to come back to them a little later in the presentation. There's been some question about what exactly is a high-rise. So just to quickly kind of explain what that means, it's different under the building code and under the planning regulations. Under the building code, this little diagram over here on the left side shows that this line here represents 75 feet. 75 feet is the floor level, not the ceiling or the roof, but the level of the floor of the top story of the building. So if it's 75 feet or lower, then that's not considered a high-rise. If it's over 75 feet to that floor level, then it is considered a high-rise, which means you have to go to more expensive construction of steel or whatever. You can't build it out of wood. Now typically, the ceiling height of the top floor of a building is going to be 10 to 15 feet or so, which means the roof of that building will be up around 85 to 90 feet. The planning regulations measure buildings by the height of the roof, not by the top floor. So the planning regulation height of a 75-foot-tall building to the top floor would be 85 to 90 feet. Then above that, you get into high-rise territory, but no developer is going to go to high-rise construction just to get an extra five feet. If they're going to go to high-rise construction material, they're going to want to get at least one or two additional floors. So we have this kind of what I call no-man's land, between 90 feet and about 110 feet, this is to the roof of the building, where you generally are not going to see a building built to that height, because it would have to be high-rise, but it's not worth it to just get that small increment of additional height. So the planning regulations set the definition of high-rise at 100 feet, which is to the roof of the building. It's a nice round number. It's easy to measure, and you're typically not going to get a building that's right at 100 feet. It'll usually be a little bit higher than that. These blue bars represent the 10 high-rise buildings that we currently have in Emeryville. The lowest of them is at 115 feet. That is the Public Market Office Tower. And later in the meeting, I'll be reporting on the new building that was approved by the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. That is going to be 113 feet, so that'll be our 11th high-rise. And then they step up to the highest high-rise that we have right now, which is the Pacific Park Plaza at 312 feet. And these other buildings are, of course, in between those two extremes. Concerning height limits and tower separation, there is no absolute maximum height limit in the general plan. Rather, the general plan states that buildings over 100 feet tall are required to have exemplary design, cause minimal impacts, and provide community amenities. And bonus height is discretionary and will be awarded only after developers demonstrate their project meets community goals. Bonus height is anything over 100 feet. Actually, anything over 75 feet, really, but here we're talking about 100-foot buildings. General plan policies also requires that high-rises have adequate separation from other tall buildings and increase sky exposure for developments with multiple towers, meaning more than one 100-foot building on the same site. The planning regulations take this one step further. For buildings over 100 feet high, there are certain findings required, including that the project will minimize impacts on public views, wind, and shadows at the street level, and that the proposed project will be separated by an adequate distance from other tall buildings higher than 100 feet, as specified in a certain section, which section says this. This is Section 9420F, which explicitly states, "In the 100-plus height district, buildings over 100 feet in height shall be separated from each other by a minimum horizontal distance equal to no less than the height of the taller building." So in other words, if you have a building 150 feet tall and another one 200 feet tall, they're supposed to be separated from each other by a horizontal distance of at least 200 feet, under our current regulations. Regarding unit mix, there is no explicit general plan goals or policies specifically about unit mix. The land use element does cite larger family-friendly units as a possible basis for development bonuses, and we have now incorporated that into our bonus system. The land use element also notes that the school district has recognized a need for an increase in affordable, family-friendly housing, which is said to be three or more bedrooms, in order to increase enrollment. The housing element of the general plan contains goals, policies, and programs to encourage larger, family-friendly units. Also, the design guidelines, which are not part of the general plan, but they flow from the general plan, they were amended in May of 2015 to add detailed guidelines for family-friendly buildings and family-friendly unit design. And this is one page. This is an excerpt. This isn't the whole thing. But this is an example of the family-friendly design guidelines that are within the Emeryville Design Guidelines. These are some example unit plans, two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units, and some of the guidelines that go along with that. And we use that to evaluate the family-friendliness of residential projects that come before the city. The planning regulations were amended in November of 2015 to add unit mix requirements with two- and three-bedroom units required to comply with the family-friendly design guidelines, which again, were adopted back in May of 2015. There are exceptions allowed to the unit mix requirements with a finding that there's a demonstrated need for a housing type or types that deviate from the unit mix and design requirements, and that the importance of meeting that need outweighs the importance of complying with the requirements. That does require City Council approval, so any project that doesn't meet the unit mix and that wants this exception has to be approved by the City Council. And examples that are given include senior housing, special-needs housing, and multi-generational housing. This diagram kind of sums up in one place what our unit mix requirements are. This is for multi-unit residential projects of 10 units or more. And the requirements are in red type, and then the black type are numbers that you kind of back into from applying the requirements. So the requirement is 50% two- or more-bedroom units, of which 15% must be three-or-more bedrooms. So it's 15% is part of the 50%. And that would then leave you 35% two-bedroom units if you subtract the 15% three-or-more bedroom from the 50%. Also, we do not allow any more than 10% studios, so that would back you into 40% one-bedrooms if you wanted to strictly apply the requirements. Now, what is the basis for these unit mix requirements? Where did they come from? Some of you may recall that we went through this rather lengthy process back in 2015. We began around the beginning of 2015, and the regulations were adopted at the end of 2015. I think they took effect in December of 2015. So it was about almost four years ago that we started, and a little over three years ago that the regulations were adopted. The intent was to attract more families with children to Emeryville. Now, why do we want to do that? Two main reasons were cited at the time. One was to promote a more interesting demographic mix by trying to counter the trend towards smaller, childless households. And the second reason was to try to increase enrollment levels in the school district, this is why we're talking about the school district, in support of the heavy investment that the city has made, and the school district has made, in ECCL. So as I said, there was an extensive analysis and public review process. It focused on an analysis of all the census tracts in the Bay Area, of which there are, I think, somewhere around 1,500, in order to try to predict expected demographic characteristics of the various unit mixes. We also reviewed school district enrollment levels and test scores of all the school districts in Alameda County to see how Emory Unified measured up to the others. We found, in the course of this study, that the school district had had a consultant prepare a report back in 2008, and one of the findings of that report stated that we believe that student yields, which is to say the number of Emory Unified students you would have per household in Emeryville, would increase if Emory could achieve test scores above those of Oakland, Hayward, San Leandro, and San Lorenzo. So that's kind of our target. We're trying to be better than those four other school districts. The consultant also said that in order for Emory Unified enrollment levels to increase, the school district should substantially increase test scores and should offer programs to increase the school district's attractiveness. And concurrently, the city should increase park space, should increase programs for youth, and should increase housing that is more attractive to families with children. So family-friendly housing was part of the mix, but it wasn't the whole story. There were these other components that were also viewed by these consultants as being important to also try to achieve. We looked at school district enrollment levels, and this is a chart of that over time from the 1980s to what was then the present, 2015. As you can see, school district enrollment peaked at almost 1,000 back in about 2002. Back in the 80s, it was about 600. From this peak, it came down. It's now around 700, or I should say it was, in 2015. This is the total. The light blue is the K-8, Anne Yates, and the purple is the high school. And then these are the test scores that were compiled back in 2015. They start back around 2002. The dark red line down here at the bottom is Emory Unified. The green line here is San Leandro, and that's one of the ones we're trying to beat. And as you can see, we've almost gotten up to their test scores a couple of times, but we have never managed to quite surpass San Leandro's test scores. Now, this gets into the weeds of the demographic analysis. I'm not going to try to explain this in any kind of detail, but I just want to briefly describe what it is. So each of these blue dots here represents one of the 1,500 census tracts in the Bay Area, and this is all of them. This is what's called a regression analysis, more commonly referred to as a scatter diagram, scatter chart, because it looks like they're scattered all over. This particular chart matches the percent of families with children, which is here on the Y-axis, with percent of two-or-more-bedroom units, which is on the X-axis down here. Emeryville is right here, the green triangle, and as you can see, it has about 12% families with children and about 38 or so percent two-or-more-bedroom units in its housing stock currently. The dashed red line is the so-called trend line. It's the best-fit line of all of these blue dots. It was determined through the course of this study that if we're going to try to emulate San Leandro, we should have a percent of families with children that is close to what they have, which is about 20%. And so this data suggests that if you want 20% families with children, which is, whoops, sorry, this line here, across here, then dropping that down to the X-axis would suggest that you need about 50% two-or-more-bedroom units. So that's where the 50% came from. Similarly, we did a similar analysis with three-or-more-bedroom units. That looks like this. And again, if we take 20% and drop it down to the X-axis, it comes to 10%. So the conclusion was that in order to get a household mix that was more like San Leandro, we should have 50% two-or-more-bedroom units, which would include 10% three-or-more-bedroom units. That is what staff recommended. That is what the Planning Commission recommended. When it came to the City Council for adoption, the council made a number of modifications to the recommendations, and one of the modifications that the council made was to increase this 10% to 15%. So the regulations are now 50% two-or-more-bedroom and 15% three-or-more-bedroom at council direction. Concerning affordability, that isn't really part of what we're considering tonight, but it is sort of the elephant in the room, so I just want to acknowledge it. The unit mix regulations don't specifically address affordability. That's a different set of regulations. It's definitely addressed, but just not in the unit mix regulations. But I would note that any project over 100 feet tall is going to require 100 bonus points. And any project that requires 100 bonus points must have 17% affordable units that are broken down by these various income levels. So this is just to say that a high-rise building, by our current regulations, is going to have at least 17% affordable units. All of the family-friendly units won't necessarily be affordable. All the affordable units won't necessarily be family-friendly. Some of them will be, and these affordability requirements are not proposed to be modified as a part of this high-rise regulation exercise. Now, what has the effect of our regulations been on the production of high-rise buildings? We haven't had very many, but a couple of developers, specifically the Nadye site and 5850 Shellmount Way, have said they would consider it, and the Planning Commission has expressed a desire, some commissioners have expressed a desire for high-rise on those two sites. But they were told by the developers that it actually wasn't feasible, partly because of our unit mix requirements. The 5850 Shellmount Way developers took it one step further and actually talked to a bunch of other developers, and he actually developed a prototype building that had the unit mix that's shown up here. And he determined that it was not economically feasible, partly because of our unit mix requirements, which his proposal would not have met our unit mix requirements. The ONI-Christie mixed-use project, which has recently had an application filed, and we're about to get started on an EIR for that, also does not meet the current unit mix requirements. This is the breakdown of what their units look like. And just to put it all in a picture that might be a little easier to grasp, this is the city requirement over here with the 50% two-or-more-bedroom, including 15% three-or-more bedroom. This was what the Shellmount Way example was. It had 40% two-or-more-bedroom and, including, 5% three-bedroom. And then the ONI project currently is proposing about 29% two-or-more-bedroom and 9% three-bedroom. This one, I would say, didn't have any studios. The ONI project does have about 20% studios. Now, concerning the tower separation requirement, buildings over 100 feet tall, as I said before, are supposed to be separated from each other by a minimum horizontal distance that's equal to no less than the height of the taller of the two. The ONI-Christie project proposes two towers on its site. One is 638 feet for the residential, and the office tower is about 202 feet. And they would be separated by only 100 feet. So that doesn't meet that requirement. Under the city regulations, they would have to be separated by 638 feet, which is the taller of the two. So the other tower, obviously, couldn't even be on the same site. So the project is going to require a variance for tower separation if that regulation is not modified. And also, no other building over 100 feet tall could be within 638 feet of the ONI tower, which is the height of that tower. And that includes the 5850 Shellmount Way site, where I think the developer's probably still interested in doing a high-rise if he could make it work. This is a little diagram that just illustrates the point of the tower separation. The red rectangle here in the middle is the location of the proposed ONI-Christie residential tower, 638 feet tall, and this black circle is a radius of about 638 feet from the tower footprint. So as you can see, the Hyatt House Hotel falls within that area, which also is actually a high-rise. The 5850 Shellmount Way site is entirely within that circle, and of course, anything up here would be within that circle. If you recall, when I showed the picture from the general plan and I said, "Remember those two high-rises," the reason I said that is that those two high-rises would be right here, on either side of Christie Avenue. So they would also be precluded from being built if the ONI project was approved under our current tower separation regulations. Now, what has been the effect of our unit mix regulations on the school district? Well, frankly, it's too early to tell. We have not had any buildings yet built and occupied that were built under our current unit mix regulations. The first ones will be the Sherwin-Williams, the four buildings at Sherwin-Williams, which are currently in for plan review. We expect to issue those building permits within the next couple of months. And those buildings won't be completed then until probably the end of next year or maybe early 2021. And so any effects on the school district of this wouldn't be expected to be seen probably for a few years after that. So we've got several years still to wait until we see if our unit mix regulations had any effect at all on the school district. However, we can say that nothing else seems to have had much of an effect on the school district in relation to enrollment levels or performance. This is that same enrollment chart I showed you before, extended out an additional four years to take account of the time that has passed since we adopted those regulations. So this is the new data over here on the right side. And this red line indicates when ECCL opened. So the school was occupying ECCL for these last two years, not before that. But as you can see, it total and K-8 and high school have all pretty much leveled off in the last four years. Concerning the performance and the test scores, the state dropped test scores back in 2013, so we can't really compare school districts by test scores anymore. But the state has now replaced it with something that they call the dashboard. And this is a bunch of individual metrics that measure school districts. They don't give it a numerical score, but they do qualitatively evaluate different factors on a scale from red to blue, where red is the worst and blue is the best, and you have orange, yellow, and green in between. It's still possible, though, however, to compare school districts to each other by simply assigning a numerical value to these numbers. So what I did, for example, was assign a 1 to a red and a 5 to a blue, and then figure out what those would be for each of these, and add them up, and then divide by the number of factors, and you get an average score for that particular school district, and then rank all the school districts in order. Right? It's not rocket science. I could do it. I did it.
The state can't fool you.
That's right.
I don't see anybody who'd use the dashboard in that fashion. There are numeric values attached, but we won't go there.
Well, I don't know how precise it is, but you know, big picture. It kind of shows you where the school districts fall in relation to each other. So this is how the school districts in Alameda County rank by the test scores in 2013, and this is how they rank by that kind of empirical method I did with the dashboard. And as you can see, of the 17 school districts, the top tier is still the top tier, middle tier is still the middle tier, bottom tier is still the bottom tier, and in fact, the bottom five are exactly the same and in exactly the same order that they were in 2013. So Emory is still third from the bottom, with Oakland and Hayward below, and San Lorenzo and San Leandro above. We're still struggling to try to outdo San Leandro. All right. So that's it for the analysis. And now on to options for your consideration. Concerning unit mix, we've come up with four options for what you could do about unit mix vis-à-vis high-rise buildings. The first option is, don't do anything. Just leave the regulations as they are and make high-rise buildings comply with our current regulations. Option two would be to modify the language to include high-rise buildings as one basis for getting an exception to the unit mix requirements. And for that, we could add an additional finding that says strict compliance with the unit mix and design requirements would preclude the development of a high-rise building in conformance with general plan guiding principles, goals, and policies. And like the other exceptions, this exception would also require City Council approval for the entire project. Another option would be to have a unit mix requirement for high-rise, but modify it so that it's fewer two- and three-bedroom units and perhaps more studios. The example that's given here is just illustrative. We're not proposing these numbers specifically. They were kind of taken from some of the examples that we looked at, but this is just an example of how those percentages could be reduced for two- and three-bedroom and increased for studios to make high-rise buildings more conducive for developers. And then the fourth option would be to exempt high-rise buildings from the unit mix requirements altogether and just add an additional finding when the Planning Commission or City Council approves a building over 100 feet tall, that it's basically that its unit mix is adequate. The Planning Commission preferred option number three. They like having a prescribed unit mix, but they are willing to have it be lower than for buildings that are less than 100 feet tall. Concerning tower separation, again, you could make no change, which would be very problematic for the ONI project, obviously, without variance, and for other high-rise buildings within that area, as I illustrated. that area, as I illustrated. We could add a stipulation that separation requirement doesn't apply to, basically, to multiple towers on the same site. That would solve Ani's problem, but it wouldn't solve the problem for other high-rises in the vicinity. You could change the tower separation requirement to be a specific number, like 100 feet, so that all high-rises would just have to be 100 feet apart, but with the same stipulation for multiple towers on the same height, with sky exposure being adequate. Or you could eliminate the tower separation requirement altogether and replace it with a finding that says the proposed tower or towers will be adequately separated from other buildings over 100 feet tall, with consideration given to sky exposure and the effects on Emeryville's skyline. The Planning Commission preferred that fourth option of a general finding that tower separation is adequate. So, discussion questions for you, basically, are which of these options do you like? For unit mix, we have the four options that I just mentioned, plus a fifth option, which is any other option, you know, none of the above, or something else that you can think of that you think we should do instead. Again, just for reference, the Planning Commission preferred option three here. For tower separation, here they are listed again, and then number five again is another option that you might think of that we didn't think of, and again, for reference, the Planning Commission liked number four here. And finally, are there any other issues related to high-rise development that we haven't thought of that need to be considered? I'll leave these questions up here for you to refer to, but I will take away the highlighting so it won't distract you. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to respond to any questions before you take public comment.
Any clarifying questions? Ms. Martinez?
So, for the unit mix options, for the Planning Commission preferred idea, if we were to come up with numbers, would you want us to come up with those numbers tonight?
No.
Or is that something that you would help propose?
No. What we would suggest, perhaps I should have concluded with next steps, after we get your direction tonight, well, depending on what that direction is, but assuming you choose some of these, well, if you were, specifically, if you were to choose option three here.
Yes, that's my question.
We would go, we, staff would then go away and do some more research, and we would come up with numbers here that we would recommend. And then we would draft an ordinance to amend the planning regulations to, for those numbers for high-rise buildings, and we would bring that to the Planning Commission for their consideration, and then to you for your adoption.
That answers my question. Thank you.
We're not expecting you to come up with numbers tonight, no.
I have a question. Do you know, do other cities in this area have tower separation requirements?
Not that I'm aware of.
Really the only one?
As far as I know. I mean, you know, there's not a lot of cities around here that have buildings over 100 feet tall, so we're really only talking about San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, maybe Albany that has one, but I'm not aware of other tower separation requirements.
Okay. If there's no other clarifying questions, do you have one?
Watergate Towers 1 and 2, are they less than 100 feet apart from each other?
Well, if you give me a minute on Google Maps, I can figure it out. I would guess they probably are just about 100 feet. 1 and 2, I'm not sure which ones those are, but...
2 that are closest to the Watergate HOA complex.
Okay. And one of which I used to work in when the city was over there. They, they're around 100 feet apart, I would say, I would guess.
The buildings are 120 feet or so tall?
Yeah, I think so. It was on that chart I showed.
I'm just wondering if they're actually the distance of the height of the buildings.
I don't know. I'll take a look and see if I can figure it out.
All right. So no other clarifying questions? Let's open it up for public comment.
Bill Reuter, longtime Emeryville resident, and as you folks know, I serve on two advisory committees for the city, budget and economic development. Let me just make a general comment on the difficulty of the decisions that we have to make in this area, and I'm quoting Charlie Bryant from a couple of years back. "We're a unique kind of city, about 12,000 residents, and about 30,000 people every day come into our town. 6,000 or so to shop and the rest to do, to work or to do business of one kind or another. We're not an ordinary community, and that makes it difficult to keep the community livable." I should point out to you that I am one of the founding members of Residents United for a Livable Emeryville, so it matters to me and it matters to the folks who I associate with in that area. Don't be, I realize, and I think you all are fully aware, of the enormous need for housing in the Bay Area. Enormous pressure here to make affordable housing and housing generally for folks who live and work in the Bay Area. But don't give up our mixed requirements and our other thoughts on having a livable community easily. Take a hard look at everything. And in particular, let me note that a mixed community, not just seniors, not just relatively young men and women working in the complex 21st century workforce, and not just other folks, but a mixed community, including lots of kids if we can get them here. Whatever that impact is on the school district or not, it can't do any harm. So it's a tough call, but don't give up things easily. What we've been standing for in terms of our mixed requirements in the past are motivated by very good thinking, very good feeling, and I hope you give them all careful consideration. Thanks for your attention.
Hi. My name is Susan Donaldson. I am also a resident of Emeryville. I have a school-aged child, and I am a newly-elected school board member, and I also wanted to speak in support of our current unit mix regulations. I feel like we signed on, as a community, to support the ECCL and to invest in that strategy of growing our enrollment and growing our community as a family-friendly community that is dedicated to creating this special place for our students and our community to be together. I feel like in this time, I just want to reread this little bit from the staff report that says, "To increase student yields, staff's analysis determined that the percent..." Back up. "The intent of these regulations is to attract more families with children to live in Emeryville. They are based on detailed analysis and were adopted following a lengthy public review process, including a special four-hour joint study session of the City Council and Planning Commission." I feel like that's, we, you, we, the council came up with those regulations after a lot of thought and a lot of research, and I too don't want you to give up hope or go back on those regulations. I think that that's a direction that we all want to hold to, and thank you for your time.
Hi. I'm Barbara Inch. I am the current Board President of Emory Unified School District and a current member of the Parks and Rec Committee. Tonight, I'm speaking to you as a long-term resident of Emeryville. I am respectfully asking that you make no changes to the unit mix options. The multi-unit policy requirement for two- or three-bedrooms adopted in 2015, there was a lot of thought put into these policies. They were well-thought-out and designed to not only bring families to Emeryville, but to encourage diversity in all of its forms. Family-friendly means more than just couples with two children. It means grandparents being able to raise their grandchildren. It means multi-generational family, extended family, and chosen family. Two- and three-bedroom units allow people to live together as they choose. They might not benefit developers, but they definitely are a community benefit. Thank you.
Good evening. Ruth Major, a resident since 1984. I just want to, first of all, acknowledge everyone who's spoken so far. I agree with them. I also want to just take a little microscope and just look at what's happening at Watergate, where I live. We have multiple families living at Watergate, and many of them want to stay in Emeryville, but they cannot find suitable accommodation for their families. Many have already moved, not wanting to move, but having to move as their families grow. When the candidates for the school board, now on the board, came to Watergate, families were really excited, and we had plenty of families turn up to meet them. They were excited to have the new school board, and they were excited about the future of the schools. It's a definite community need. We need larger unit mixes. We need to encourage families to feel that they have a place in the city, regardless of how that family mix is. And I think the work that went into putting together these policies to begin with were well-thought-out and need to be considered. As I say, families want to stay. They need the council and the city to be behind them to help them find accommodation that is suitable for them. Thank you.
Is that my, the sound of my entrance? Thank you. State of the Union speech now.
You are wearing a red hat.
Ron Freuen. This is for the Chinese New Year. Gong Xi Fa Tai. Today is the first day of the Chinese New Year. That's what the red is for also. So Ron Freuen, I'm a resident also of the western edge of Watergate, and I don't have a particular position at this point. I'm just trying to learn a little about it. We've been approached by the Ani group to do a forum at Watergate. We had a brief meeting today with them, so we're trying to determine, you know, when and how to do it. But I have some questions, and maybe Charlie can answer it. There's a section about minimal impacts, and it says views, wind, and shadows. What about the impacts of traffic and pollution? Where does that fit in on the minimal impacts issue? Second question is, how do these 100 points get put together, and what is the derivation and the mix of those? And the third is just, I'm not clear on the priorities at all after this presentation. Part of it feels like we're trying to justify the investment we put into the ECCL, which was extensive, and we're not getting the enrollment, so to get the enrollment, we want to encourage more family-friendly housing, and that might require high-rise buildings of enormous magnitude. Or do we want to change the look of the city to encourage high-rise buildings, and therefore we have to downgrade the requirements? So it seems to me the council has to determine what its priorities are, because if you want family-friendly, then if you water down the mix to the point where it's at the Planning Commission level, that doesn't seem to make sense. If it's to encourage high-rises, then you're going to have to lower the priority of family-friendly. So I'm urging you to develop some priorities on what you want to encourage. I could envision, for example, a circular series of townhouses that would probably accomplish the goal of family-friendly housing without an enormous tower. I mean, there are many possible designs for that area, and also would allow the, what is it, Powell Street Plaza to have a high-rise or mid-rise. So, these are all questions, I think, need to be answered before any decisions are made. Charlie, can you just tell me what the timeline is so we can determine when the forum? Could you answer that question?
I think maybe we can take that question offline, because your public comment time is up.
Offline?
Thank you. I'm sure Charlie can get you that answer. Okay. More public comment? Come on down.
Good evening, members of the council. I know I won't be making any additional friends this evening with these comments, but I'll go ahead anyway. I think that a one-size-fits-all building unit percentage might not be totally ideal, that high-rise attracts a different type of resident than a mid-rise. So perhaps having two different tracks on the unit mix requirements may be prudent. So, have a good evening.
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh.
He doesn't, oh, if you'd like to, sorry.
Don't coerce him, please.
Jesus Christ.
Yeah, he's allowed to.
Don't coerce him, please.
You do not have the right to speak over me, sir. You can come up for public comment, though, if you'd like to, but you don't yell at me from the back of the room.
Please don't engage in coercive practices for things that are not required of the residents.
We can look up coercive. I do know how you like to look up words and define them.
He didn't have to give his name. You shouldn't ask him to give it to him. Give the name. It's not required.
We started the clock?
I did.
Great, thank you.
Okay. How much housing is needed in Emeryville? That's what's driving this discussion. We need more housing, is what a lot of people are saying, including, it seems like you guys. Well, we have an answer to that, and that is A-BAG tells us the answer, and that's an organization that we belong to. Looks like we lost a council member. And A-BAG says that we already have more than 200% of what we should have for market-rate housing, more than 200%. So it's not a crisis. It's sort of like the Trump crisis at the border. It's a fake crisis. We've done our share in Emeryville. Other towns haven't, but we have. A-BAG says Emeryville has more than 200% of recommended market-rate housing. Okay, now, the central core that Mr. Bryant was speaking about, the idea the general plan has a central core stepping down from it as you go away from it, that's fantasy. First off, that immediately got the kibosh put on that immediately after our general plan was written 10 years ago, when a developer came before the council and said he doesn't want to be constrained, and that would be the Nadye project. He's outside the central core. He wanted unlimited building height, and the council gave it to him. So that's our legacy, like it or not. When a developer comes before the council, the council buckles and gives it. So I don't think there's anybody here that really seriously believes the central core concept as a real thing. Every time a developer comes before this Emeryville City Council, wanting to build a tall building outside the core will be taken very seriously, if not just completely carte blanche, allowed it to happen. Okay, the developers, according to Mr. Bryant, saying that these projects, these high-rise projects, aren't penciling out. I don't think we should be listening to the developers. They're paid to lie. We found, we caught them lying here. The five of you have caught the Mark Stefan from the Public Market Project lying. He said that only 6% would pencil out of affordable housing, and then you guys said no, and then he came back later on and gave you 11%. So he said 6% more than that wouldn't pencil out, found out a lie. They're paid to lie. It's not illegal for them to lie. By lying, they're doing their fiduciary duty to their shareholders, and so that's what you should expect, them to lie. So I don't think you should be listening to what the developers say. You should be listening to what the residents say. Okay. Okay, the fact that the Ani Tower was talked about so much here tonight is the real giveaway. Public policy should be for the public, not for a specific person or persons. I think it's totally inappropriate that we're talking so much about the Ani Tower, about how to accommodate them, and we're going to change our regulations to accommodate this specific developer. I just think it's totally inappropriate.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, see none. Let's, we've got one more. Come on down.
Good evening. Member Medina, Vice, Mayor Medina, Vice Mayor Pats, and members of the City Council. I'd like to state my name for the record. My name is Sarah Nguyen. I'm an Emeryville resident. I'm a parent. I'm also a member of the Emory Unified School Board, and my wife and I are raising our two sons in a home that's designated as a one-bedroom unit. The reason that I raise that as part of my comment is the thing that stands out to me, pardon me, in this presentation that I'm just holding as a question, as I'm considering all of these things, is kind of the danger of a single story. So I think we're talking a lot about high-rises and the housing opportunities that those provide for families. I do notice that there's quite a lot of other housing development taking place right now in Emeryville, a large portion of it very close to my home. I live at Halligan Sherwin, which is notably closer to ECCL than some of the areas that we're discussing. So I think that there is an interesting historical connection that I learned about this evening that's being made between housing development and Emory Unified Enrollment and also performance. That's something that I'm just curious to con- So I think we're talking a lot about high-rises and the housing opportunities that those provide for families. I do notice that there's quite a lot of other housing development taking place right now in Emeryville, a large portion of it very close to my home. I live at Halligan Sherwin, which is notably closer to ECCL than some of the areas that we're discussing. So I think that there is an interesting historical connection that I learned about this evening that's being made between housing development and Emory Unified Enrollment and also performance. That's something that I'm just curious to consider, and I think that the question this brings to my mind is other housing that's being developed in our community, where it's located, whether or not it is family-friendly, and what the connection between family-friendly and affordable might be. Just questions that I'm thinking it would benefit all of us to consider as we move forward with the changes that may or may not be made to the unit mix requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? All right. Now let's move on to discussion. Who wants to start? John?
I'm still, can I have a minute?
Oh, yeah, still.
Mayor Medina, I do have an answer to Councilmember Bowder's question.
112?
Yeah, very good. Around, plus or minus.
So is that shorter than the buildings?
Yeah, the height of those two buildings is about 144 feet, and they're about 112-ish feet apart.
Thank you for that interesting factoid. Expect to see on a trivia sheet near us soon. All right. I'd be really interested in hearing from Member Martinez or Donahue here for that 2015 discussion over unit mix.
I was here for that discussion, and I do have to say that I don't think at the time we were talking a lot about residential high-rise structures. So the financing of residential high-rises never entered our conversation. To be honest, like, I haven't seen that as a possibility because of the complexity of building a high-rise and the cost of building a high-rise. So I was surprised when the ONI development was proposed. So this is, I think this is new information that we didn't have at the time.
Thank you. That was a question of mine. Member Donahue?
I really think that this is an existential question for our town. What kind of city do we want to be? And I think we made a choice that we imagined our future to be. And we've had one large development that is meeting the goals of family-friendly housing that have a lot to do with the vision that we had about how our city should look and feel. And having two developers not like our family-friendly guidelines doesn't necessarily constitute what I see as a true evaluation about the practicality of our family-friendly guidelines and building high-rises. Because these are developers who have particular interests in mind. Most developers who build high-rises have a particular marketing idea in mind. But I think to really answer this question, we would need almost a disinterested party who would analyze the numbers. Because, you know, I can see that there are savings to be had in having three bedrooms, for example. You have one kitchen, three bedrooms. You have a higher population density potentially per square foot. That lowers the actual cost of making the building. Maybe it doesn't lower the expectations of the developer, but I mean, there is, I don't see any real analysis about family-friendly guidelines that would, that I would perceive as a need to change our guidelines, where we already have a project with what looks like we'll have 1,000 people coming in with these guidelines in place. I am, however, interested about the tower separation concept. I think our tower separation idea is just aesthetically not necessarily a good idea. If I look at the world of high-rise architecture in various cities around the world, there's something to be said for the quality of the space that doesn't have this arbitrary spacing as a part of it. And if I think about the hiking that I've done in Canyonlands, the Grand Canyon, these are vertical environments that have aesthetic qualities, and I think we should be more thoughtful in our tower separation requirements. I think we can be, we can have much greater density of high-rise buildings that are better-looking, more livable. So I think we should really look at that, changing those requirements. And I think we also should look at the nature of our geology under our city and see, does this preclude us from having high-rise structures? Or are high-rise structures just as easily built with our liquefaction issues? Can the friction of piles really support high-rise towers effectively? It seems like they can, but I don't see that being discussed here. I would want that to be a part of discussion before changing our family-friendly guidelines, to see the real difficulties in building high-rise in Emeryville.
Mayor Medina?
Yeah.
May I just clarify one thing?
Please do.
I just want to clarify for the council that currently, anyway, there is no consideration of amending the family-friendly design guidelines or their applicability to two- and three-bedroom units. The question that's before the council is whether or not to modify the unit mix.
Yes.
The number of two- and three-bedroom units. But the developers that I've spoken with and the developers that have addressed the planning commission have indicated that they can produce units that meet our family-friendly guidelines in high-rise buildings. They just can't produce as many two- and three-bedroom units. That's what they're saying.
Okay. Go ahead, Member Pats, or Vice Mayor Pats.
So I started with sort of this premise of ONI Group, which is a family developer, which, as somebody pointed out, tonight's State of Union, where we get to listen to a family developer talk about their goals and objectives. And I ended up in Vancouver, which is the city they're based in, and looked at their model. And they have unit mix requirements. Vancouver realized that they were becoming the land of singletons and put in ordinances in place. And I looked to their planning commissioner, who summed up my thoughts pretty well, so I'm going to quote him really quickly. He was fired, so if you Google him later, spoiler alert. So he said, "It is not the job of planning to maximize the profits of developers. It's the job of planning to determine the vision for the city and the downtown, set clear expectations, and let those expectations help clarify the land value for developers. Developers will argue two- and three-bedroom units are not viable, but it is false. Economic analysis shows that two- and three-bedroom units can be less profitable than one-bedroom or studios, but that's not the same as saying they aren't viable." Okay, and it's Brett Toddren, I have to give him credit. Which led me to our numbers. I don't know if we've talked about this, we haven't talked about it. Average household size in Emeryville is 1.8 people. Statewide, it's 2.9. Okay, we have one less person living per household in this city than the rest of the state. Percentage of family households were at 32% statewide, the average is 68%. So when we look at that, that tells me we don't match the state. We are a house of, we're a city of people living in one-bedroom apartments. So from there, I looked at the ECCL numbers, and it struck me that if we're going to go back 10 years at maximum enrollment in, bear with me here as I scroll through my notes, there are about 636 school-aged children in the city in 2000 when we were at peak enrollment, which means that the rest of those kids came from out of district. We're at the same level now. We have about 541 school-aged children based on census estimates of our population back in July. So we're actually increasing enrollment at ECCL. We didn't talk about the percentage of Emeryville residents versus non-residents. I can tell you when I looked at it three years ago, the percentage of residents was lower than it is today. And I can tell you enrollment is actually up at the ECCL this year over the past years. And I say this with a caveat that I am not a fan of the ECCL. You know, I remember speaking out against it when, what was the superintendent's name? Harold Hill, no, Tony Smith, came and sold us on the idea. So for me, this isn't even a question of whether or not we should change it. If we want to have families in town, then we need to do it. I mean, it's, you know, one of our general plan number seven says, "We want more diverse, balanced, inclusive community with families." It's not just, "We want an interesting skyline." We actually have it in the general plan. I remember coming out and speaking for this in 2015 when my neighbor was on the council and saying, "Hey, we need families in town. Towns are not sustainable as the economies change. If we become a bunch of singletons and the tech industry or biotech industry move or change, we're stuck with single-bedroom households." And finally, you know, despite talking to all my neighbors who really love this ordinance, one of the things that comes up all the time here is we want to talk about reducing crime. And there's a correlation between families and reductions in crime. Okay? And so one of the ways you keep cities safe is you have more families. They're just inherently safer. It goes along with other economic factors, but it's one of the factors. So for me, I don't see anything wrong with this ordinance. If developers can't make it pencil, then they need to do something differently. It's all about their profit, not about viability. And so that's my thoughts on this.
Thank you. Do you want me to go ahead?
I'll go.
All right.
I have not quite put all my notes down, but, so thank you, everybody, for coming out and sharing your thoughts this evening. My first, my first comment is one that Councilmember Martinez, I think appropriately, raised, which is, in 2015, when we discussed unit mix, we never discussed it in the context of high-rises. And that's actually one of several things I want to say that I think are really important to recall. I received emails and phone calls, some of them nice and some of them nasty, from people who didn't like that I asked the city council to have this conversation. It's very important to have this conversation. It's important to review everything we do regularly. And we didn't have a conversation about this in the context of high-rise development, and we're doing it now. And the guiding document in this city is the general plan. And I think most people here who follow city council would have a hard time finding a time when I have not fought to defend the general plan. And the general plan identifies this zone as a place for density. And we've had times where we've had developers come in and want to put very dense housing in single-family zoned areas, areas of stability, as we've called them here. And protecting the general plan is not about protecting the pieces that we like independent of one another. What makes the general plan work is when all of the pieces of the general plan as a system are put together. Because the prudence of it is that it is designed to create that type of balance that we need in the community. And it's not just housing we're talking about. We're talking about transportation infrastructure, public works and public safety infrastructure. All those components are tied to realizing and fulfilling the vision of the general plan. And you get to a point where if you aren't willing to pursue the vision of the general plan in select areas, why are you pursuing it at all? And so when we talk about this neighborhood and unit mix in this neighborhood, it's really important to remember what unit mix in this neighborhood, in a high-rise, right? Putting aside for a moment everything else, in a high-rise, what that means for the general plan. So I disagree with a lot of the things that have been said this evening, mostly because they're premised upon inaccurate statements and inaccurate understandings of how housing development works. So in 2015, when the city council was contemplating a moratorium on new development because there was a need to ensure that we got affordability out of developers, I came here and I said the developers lie. I agree with you, Mr. Donahue, a lot of them lie. And they said, "We'll never build in this town again if you require 12% to 20% affordable units conscripted out of us as part of our market rate development." And I know that to be false. And I know that to be false because I have a lot of experience working on housing development, and in particular, working on affordable housing and housing for people who are low-income. One of the things that hasn't been discussed or is being pushed off to the side is the cost of construction for a high-rise building. It is a materially different endeavor than the construction of a building that is seven stories or less, or is a single-family home or a duplex. So when we discussed in 2015, unit mix, okay? And I would remind everybody that I was on the planning commission at that time when we discussed unit mix, and I advocated for the two- and three-bedroom set aside. We did not discuss high-rises. And if we had discussed high-rises, there would be a different conversation because the steel frame construction required and the labor required to do it is different than what it costs to build two concrete podium and five wood frame structures in the city of Emeryville. Why does this matter and what does it translate to? Well, a couple of things. The price per square feet for adding three-bedroom units to a high-rise that's made of steel will materially increase the cost to rent or sell that unit, if it's a condo, to the point where all the families that we're all hoping will come, nobody with the children will be able to afford those units at all. So we're in a little bit of a situation because, so what? So do we simply say we're going to give up this value over here in order to approve an affordability value over here? How do we resolve that issue? It requires a review and a balancing of how to achieve maximum affordability and a maximum number of beneficial unit mix that promotes families. I'm not for stripping three bedrooms out of this equation. What I'm saying is that there has to be a review of how we have proportionally divided. I agree with the planning commission that we need to come up with a different set of requirements than what has been blanketly provided, because those requirements, which by the way, aren't tied to anything other than we want to match San Leandro School District, so let's match it to what their proportion is. And I would remind people, San Leandro is largely a single-family home community. So the reasons, so the irony is that we don't have the ability to build all the single-family homes that San Leandro has to actually meet that requirement. So we are trying to take what we want, the square peg, and put it in the round hole, which is infill development that is going to be multifamily in nature. We aren't capable of providing that type of output simply because another community, based on a school district algorithm of how many people have children and how many percentage of the units are multi-bedroom, we don't have the same community. So the premises behind this analysis are flawed, and we should be reviewing this for how it works in the construction of a high-rise building. We should have and welcome families into high-rise buildings. That is definitely a goal that we should keep. How we do that prudently to not lose the opportunity to build much-needed housing, which would include, I might add, at 638 proposed units, over 110 units, around 110 units of affordable housing. That's 110 units that would be made available to low-income people in this community that won't be there if we don't, if we don't do something about it. So we need to have a conversation about it, because the price per square foot, when you construct three bedrooms, a large number of three bedrooms in a high-rise, means that the cost of those units will exceed what the average person here can afford. And so decreasing it does a couple of things, actually. One, it brings the price point down, making homeownership or rental feasible to people who have children, who have childcare expenses, education expenses, other things that working people who don't have kids right now in this community don't have. But the other thing is that we have single-family neighborhoods where children can and should be welcome to live. And a lot of the family homes that we have in this community are occupied by four and five single people who can't afford to rent anywhere else, so they rent homes together and they live in those places together. And families can't live in neighborhoods where other children play on the street, where they have backyards, and where they can walk to their school. So it's partly about balancing the community and fulfilling the vision of the general plan. And not to say families belong in this space and single people belong in this space. I'm not saying that. But there has to be a review of how we build, each of the types of buildings we build, in a way that makes it feasible financially for those people who want to live there to do it. Do we want to be a community of exclusively wealthy people who live in a high-rise? I hope not. So statistically, you know, what comment was made, Mr. Pats made a comment about statistically, families make communities safer. So do wealthy people. So we could build a high-rise building that's price-pointed out beyond what most people can afford, and the reality might be in the end that we have a lot of wealthy people who live together and the community could be safer that way, too. I also think that when you do the state versus Emeryville analysis, I mean, I think that some of these analogies aren't very fair. The state has large swaths of sprawl, lots of suburban communities. The single-family zoning in this state, if we looked at it instead of proportions of families and where they live, look at the single-family zoning. We live in an urban community that has almost no single-family zoning, for the most part, in our city. The reality is that single-family zoning, great The reality is that single-family zoning greatly contributes to the percentage of people who live in family-sized households in those communities. And so again, why we're metricing ourselves against, benchmarking ourselves to San Leandro, I'm not quite sure, because that's an example of a community that does not have the same infrastructure basis that we have. Finally, I would just point out that, you know, some people will walk away and say, he's abandoning this, he doesn't support this. Clearly, I support families coming to this community. Supported Measure C, I'm a strong supporter of what we're doing at Estrella Vista, which by the way, Estrella Vista has 13.5% of the units are less than two-bedroom, and the vast majority of them are three-bedroom or more. So we are building housing to put more children in the school district. And the reality is that the school district does have a lot of things to work on, and I'm happy we have new leadership at the school district level, because the prior school district didn't support affordable housing in this community, which is the irony. I appreciate that three members of the school district came tonight. It's nice to see a change in attitude from the school district about that. But the city has been fulfilling its commitment to putting families in the community, making places like Estrella Vista, The Ambassador, other family-oriented affordable places possible. And so I don't think that we need to throw away the commitment to unit mix that promotes families when we talk about high-rises. But the reality is that it is different. And just like we regulate single-family homes differently than we regulate five-to-20-unit homes than we do buildings that are over 75 feet, we have to have a conversation that we haven't had about how you, how you put unit mix into high-rises. And so I, I don't support no change, simply because no change is essentially saying, I don't want to have a conversation about the, the realities, the economics, and the socioeconomic impact on families who would have the opportunity to live here. Because the biggest premise, I think, that Emeryville has done wrong for the long time, and then I'm going to conclude, is the belief that by building things that have the, have three or four bedrooms in it, that somehow families will appear in them. We have to do a lot of other things. And I think the, there was a slide Charlie had that noted that park space has to be a priority in this community. We have to make sure that the school district has our full support and that we actually promote educational achievement for kids and that test scores succeed. And the city's real role in, in these is both partnership, but to build these things and make sure they work. And that requires balance. And so I, I support, I support finding a high-rise set of requirements that better matches what it would take to, to make this type of project feasible and, and practical. And on the tower separation requirement, I actually would like to modify the planning commission's recommendation. I think that we should simply allow a tower separation to be found, simply if it's adequate. I don't think there needs to be additional conditional language upon it for a finding, just simply whether or not the tower separation is adequate can be a finding subjectively that we make. Because it, you get into the issues in the future where you're going to have, okay, so if it's two feet here or four feet there, do we then have to have rules for variances and things like that? And I think that the high-rise building issue can be addressed differently. Those are my comments.
Thank you. All right. I agree that this is kind of an existential question, right? This is a real policy question for our city of what are our priorities? And I think a lot of members of the audience drove at that. Would we prioritize? And I don't take lightly that three years ago, there was a lot of community input on our, a little over three years ago now, on how our family-friendly unit mix should be decided. But I'm looking at that as one part of our city's goals, and the general plan of having some high-rises in this particular zone is another part. And if there is a fundamental problem between those two goals, I'm very interested in finding a solution. I do agree with Member Bauders that I don't like comparing us to San Leandro or the rest of the state of California. There's a reason I don't live there. I live in Emeryville. It's a unique and awesome city. I don't want to live in a suburb, and I don't want to zone this place as a suburb. And I don't think that by virtue of being a suburb, kids have better lives necessarily. I think there are genuine benefits of being an urban city, and we can expect to see that we're going to have kind of different percentages than other areas. That's normal, and I don't think that is a problem. What I don't know is actually whether or not this pencils out. I am not a developer. I'm not a construction expert. I am skeptical of developers telling me this doesn't pencil out. And I agree with Member Donahue that two developers saying that does not mean that that's a reality and that no one could possibly build something here. So I'm not interested in taking that at face value and giving a blanket exemption. I would be interested in getting more information as to if this unit mix is actually impossible, having that demonstrated to me with facts and math, rather than two developers backing out. And if, if that is impossible, then what is possible? And trying to look at what that is rather than choosing an arbitrary unit mix we think kind of gets in between those two things. So I'd like to learn more about the economics of unit mixes. And I am really interested to hear that this was not previously discussed in the context of considering a high-rise, considering how prominently those appear to feature in our general plan and the whole visuals and everything. I was really blown away by that. And I also think, when we look at the context of this unit mix being decided through the school district, our school district has a finite amount of capacity we can build to. And perhaps we weren't thinking of how many units we would add to Emeryville at that point. How many numbers of two-to-three bedrooms do we actually need? Is it a percentage or is it a net number of two-to-three bedrooms we need to add enough children to fully fill out our entire school district? Can we, can we figure out that number? That is something I want to know, because we've got 86 units at Estrella Vista, we've got 1,000 units with Sherwin-Williams that are meeting this unit mix requirement.
100 units.
500 units. We've got many more units coming in the public market. At what point are we going to be overloading our school district? I mean, I don't think that that's not, just a ridiculous conversation to have. We're hearing all about how this is supposed to, the premise of this unit mix is to drive enrollment in our school district. That is a finite number, and I want to figure out what that is. So if this, I think in terms of our options given for unit mix, I could be interested in number, you know, one or two. I've got a question really, Charlie. If we do one, no change, there's nothing in our thing that says we can't actually make an exception, right? It just says exceptions can be made for these or other reasons. Do we have to add high-rises in to make an exception?
No, not really.
Okay.
The council could entertain an exception for some other purpose, but you would, if you didn't modify it, you would be required to make the finding that the need for a specific housing type outweighs the importance of the unit mix requirement.
Okay. That's good to know, the clarification between number one and two. I'm interested in continuing, continuing this conversation with more information about the economics of high-rises and unit mixes. And I am also interested in altering our tower separation requirements. Those do not seem to be well justified to me anywhere in the report or the previous discussion unless somebody has some new information for me about it. All right, Member Martinez.
So Mayor, I just want to agree 100% with everything that Member Bauders has stated. I think that we can move forward with number three and get the information that you're asking for, because number three, the numbers that staff would be coming back with would be predicated on, you know, what, what are the numbers that would make that type of construction feasible and yet get us that balance of the most beneficial unit mix? I also want to respect the fact that Member Bauders was a member of planning commission. That's why I'm supporting his suggestion for tower separation. So, you know, it's true, we're talking about unit mix options for high-rise buildings in general, but we've definitely, we've got one project that we are talking about that's on the horizon, and that's the, the Anni project. In my time on council, I have come around to believe that building housing, first affordable housing, but building any housing at all is imperative in California and in the Bay Area especially. And I am loathe to delay or throw wrenches into developments that are offering this much-needed salve for our state. And yeah, I, I'm not saying that high-rises should be able to look any way they want or be composed of whatever they want, but we've got a specific project with a specific developer who, because they're vertically integrated, may be able to weather what I see as a contracting economy. I don't see a ton of development coming our way from a ton of different types of developers the way that we've experienced in the past in the next five years. But this is one huge project that could employ a lot of people at fair wages and create a lot of housing in a time that we really need it. So it's, I'm really, really hesitant to, you know, have study session upon study session where we're not moving the ball forward and having the difficult discussions.
I hear you. Member Patz?
So I want to respond to a few things that were said. Numbers are illustrative, not comparative. I think when we, and Charlie, they were your numbers from San Leandro, so forgive me if I'm saying this wrong. The idea is we don't want to become San Leandro. If I, you know, and I'd looked at the regression analysis, the idea was that this gives us a sense of what we need to build in town if we want to get the unit mix to where we have a more diverse population. You know, we could put up hotels and maximize profits. We could put up micro-units and maximize profits. I agree with Scott that it's an existential question. It's a matter of what our principles are. And, you know, I sat here for the discussions back in 2015 about unit mix. And I agree with Member Bauders when he says it's the general plan, but the discussion in 2015 was exactly about the general plan. Our desire to increase the number of multi-generational people in town, whether that's families with children, whether that's people who, you know, I bought a larger unit so I could house my mother-in-law, and I'm now at the point where I may have to house my own mother. Like, I need that space, that flexibility. If we lock into single units, we really limit diversity in town, and we also limit sustainability. And I hear you about the need for housing and affordable housing. And that is one of the things that I really do value, but I'm not willing to make other sacrifices. You know, if we didn't have our fair wage or union requirements, buildings would be much cheaper to build in Emeryville than in Oakland and other places. But we're not willing to concede on that piece. I don't think we should concede on the family mix either. I think we have to value all of these things. And if it slows down development, but we get the right development, that's what matters. So it's a balancing of those things. I don't want to be San Leandro. I, too, don't live in the suburbs. But I also couldn't live in town if I only had a one-bedroom. And I remember 15 years ago, finding a place with enough space for my wife and my mother-in-law was a challenge. I got lucky. It's what brought me to Emeryville, is that I found a place that fit my family. Had I not found it in Emeryville, I would never have lived in this town that I love because I couldn't have found, I couldn't, I couldn't house my family here. And, you know, and I want to go back to, when we talk about affordable housing, you said that there are four or five people living in, in houses where families could live. That actually applies to three-bedroom units in, in towers as well. That's another way to create affordability for people, is to allow them to have multiple people in one. I mean, that's what I did when I was young and moved to the city, is I always lived in multi-room housing. So again, I don't want to be, I think the comparisons to, to California and San Leandro are reasonable because they illustrate to us the direction we need to. And finally, I want to address the capacity of the schools. While we've increased the number of Emeryville residents that are attending Emory schools, we still have 40, 45% from out of district. So right there, we could double the number of kids in town and not really impact the number of kids in our schools. Additionally, the school district actually owns three sites. Their ability to expand, and finally, the ECCL project has a mythical Part B that includes a bike path and more classrooms. Right? And so it was designed with the idea that if we met them and got more people, all of a sudden, they could increase their capacity and we'd get a bike path.
And AC Transit closes.
That wasn't on the, that was the original plan, but.
Oh, the legend.
But there is a, there's actually drawings of more things, and then the bike path comes in. That was their concession. It was quite insidious. Phase two. I'm, I'm, I like bees, but yeah. Phase, phase two is this mythical increased classrooms and a bike path behind the pool that's coming any day now.
So maybe let's just keep to unit mix for now and try to give some direction on that and then hit tower separation? All right. I am personally not ready to say absolutely not. I want more information before I talk further about this. And I'm open to considering an option that would give me, as a Member Martinez option mentioned, more information about what the economics are of this and what that would look like for the city. However, still retaining some skepticism of this. And I'm hearing something similar from Member Donahue, and I don't know if anyone has a motion that might encapsulate an option for us here.
Well, I, I don't necessarily want to make a motion, but I just want to suggest a couple of things. If there's a majority who are interested in a conversation about what might be a better balance, because I just, in response to what Councilmember, Vice-Semester Patz just said, you know, yeah, you could build a high-rise and put three bedrooms, and it may be affordable to have three single people live there. I think that just kind of cuts against the whole argument, this is families then. Like, if we're actually trying, because three single people, so you could build all these three bedrooms, is what we're admitting, but there may not be any families. That was one of my points, is you aren't getting families by building bedrooms. It does not make it the same. That being said, I agree that a certain amount of housing stock needs to have the potential to accommodate families. We have to do that, right? That's why this guideline was put in place to begin with. If we want to change the trajectory, clearly, building, you know, studios in one bedrooms ad nauseam doesn't make it possible in the end, because there's not many families I know who want to live in one bedrooms. So there has to be that balance, right? And I think when you also think about, don't think about a single project right now that's in front of us. Think about the trajectory of this neighborhood and what we're doing. So think of the public market, which escaped the development bonus guidelines by a hair, right? Which I know the council at the time tried very hard to pull into that. But think about the other projects that will be in this neighborhood, that will come to this neighborhood and will not be high-rises because they're in the surrounding areas that aren't zoned for this, that will build seven-story buildings that will give us all these family-sized units that we want. We will spur other types of development. It's not like everybody coming in here is going to want to build a tower. And even if they did, there isn't a whole lot of space zoned to do that. So we are creating the invitation to cultivate that renovation of a neighborhood in a way that brings more people in who want to build housing. And that housing will capture what we've already put in there. So there's kind of, there's kind of a balance to be had. And I, so I don't support no change, because I think it's denying the fact that there's economic variation between high-rise housing and mid-rise and low-rise housing. So I don't support that. I, I personally believe that, to the points that were made by the public about developers, I agree. And I think that number two is a dangerous proposition, because if it's requiring council approval, councils that come after us will be able to give away things to developers without requiring things from them. And so I think that a council approval process is a dangerous and slippery slope for the days that come after us. What's that?
I'm always struck by this, because they can do exactly what we're doing and just change the ordinance.
They could, that's true, but, but it would be more transparent, like, just like there's pressure on us to not change the family guidelines.
Yeah, no, I hear that.
There'll be pressure on them to not just give themselves blanket authority to do this. And I think that the finding for high-rise buildings, that whatever is proposed is adequate, is equally as bad as number two for a different reason. So I, I support number three, and I appreciate the planning commission's review and diligence on this matter, because I think that there should be specific requirements for this. I think it needs to be rooted in what is feasible. I think it'd be interesting to know, we haven't asked this, but I'd be interested to know in high-rises in San Francisco that have two- and three-bedroom units, how many of them are there and how many of them are actually occupied by families? Because what we have is an economic problem, which is the cost of construction in Emeryville is the same as the San Francisco construction market, but the rents and the sale price in Emeryville are lower than the San Francisco market. And so we can say developers just want to hand up, but the reality is an economic one. You aren't going to change the market in that respect. So we're going to build the same thing that San Francisco builds, but the reality is the developer is going to have less space to get money out of it. They're not going to be, and so when they say it won't pencil out, that's not necessarily a falsehood. And I'm the first person to call them out on, oh, we can't build affordable, and we can't do this here and there. I've always been the first one to do it. But I actually agree that when you change the materials and you're going to use San Francisco prices for construction, you aren't going to get San Francisco rents. We are essentially going to have luxury-only units and something I've heard, and they're going to be rental for a long time in order to cover their costs. And so I think that the reality is if we want the prospect of ownership, if we want the opportunity to have those rents be affordable to actual people who have kids, so not, we just, we didn't just build two or three bedrooms that get shared by roommates, we have to find a sweet spot. And so I personally think we need And so I personally think we need to pursue, as Councilmember Martinez, I think, also said, number three, and look for what makes it, what's a good guideline, where's the sweet spot for how to do this in a way that reflects the economy, reflects family-specific needs, and also what the community can deliver. That's my, that's my recommendation.
Okay. Member Pats?
So while I prefer number one, I want to piggyback on what Member Bouders just said. For me, it comes down to, if I'm going to give this up, what do I get? And I hear you that what we're going to get is some, we're going to get construction, is basically what it boils down to. Without this, we won't get the construction. For me, I think if I, if you want to waiver from this, and I'm going to use that term very loosely, then I would love to see it tied to a point system where we can have some asks and say, you know what, we can give you some room to mix around with, play around with the number of unit mix, but it comes at a cost of other things that may be more, help you pencil better. So that's my only thought. If, if we're not going to go with one, which I don't think we are, that we don't just give them a flat, lower requirement, we actually keep the requirement, but say, if you want a lower requirement, because we want you to build here, we're going to ask some other things like we would for affordable units and things like that.
So it's a very excellent point, if I may continue, Ms. Mayor.
Please do.
So one of the things, it's just a math factor here, and I haven't done the math on it, but if you think about the fact that 17% of whatever unit, the mix, whatever the total number is, have to be affordable, if you, and I'm not proposing this, so let me be very clear, I'm not proposing this, but just to make the math easy, if you were to say all the three bedrooms had to become two bedrooms, right? And I wrote down, I did the math on the total number of units here and how this breaks out. So based on the current proposal, which I don't necessarily agree with their unit mix proposal as it is, but it would, the total number of bedrooms in a three-bedroom unit, there are 57 three-bedroom units in the current proposal, and so at three bedrooms, if you turned those into two-bedroom units, right, the, the rough estimate is that you'd get a net gain of about 40 units, okay? There'd be a net gain of about 40 units. By turning all three bedrooms into two bedrooms, I'm just literally taking every three bedroom, two three-bedrooms becomes three two-bedrooms, right? That's kind of the math I'm doing here. So I'm doing, Charlie, go ahead.
Just, just a reality check here. We're talking, are you talking about the ONI project?
Yes.
They are at the maximum unit density right now, units per acre for the site, so they can't add any more units to the site, or they will exceed the maximum units per acre.
They filled the 638 as the envelope, and they've just proportioned it the way they've done it, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, so then I would agree, because my, my recommendation was going to be that by increasing the number of units, you have a higher percentage, a number of units that's affordable. But I think it's a fair ask to, to say that there's a percentage increase to use the high-rise formula. There's, that's something that we could evaluate and say, you know what, it goes to 20% if you, if you avoid three-bedroom units or something like that. So I don't think that that's something that can't be evaluated as part of considering number three. I think that's a fair thing.
I'd be very interested in considering that. It could be more affordable housing. It could be a giant bridge over the highway. There's things we could ask for.
Derogables.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
So does it sound like we kind of have a consensus on learning more about the economics of unit mix, considering what a new mix would look like, and also including some possible requirements for high-rises to get that mix percentage? Okay. Is that adequate directions?
Sort of. I'm not feeling real confident that staff is in a position to go out and actually draft an ordinance right now. I think that
Take your time.
It sounds like from the, your deliberations, that a little further research is in order. I'm wondering if we need to come back for another study session with you all, when we have put the additional information together, and then take it back to the Planning Commission for an ordinance? Does that sound like a plan?
I think so.
I agree with that.
All right. I think we've heard loud and clear the information that you're looking for.
Okay.
We don't have that information tonight. We will get as much of it as we can and bring it back to you as soon as we're able to.
Thank you.
Does that sound acceptable?
That does sound acceptable.
All right.
All right. Tower mixed requirements, or tower separation requirements.
John, I liked what you were saying about that issue of leaving it somewhat subjective to the Planning Commission, because then the specifics of the actual place could be taken into account.
Yeah.
So that makes a lot of sense to me.
If you could go to that prior slide, I think you're probably doing that, Charlie.
Whoops, too far. If I heard Councilmember Bouders correctly, I think what you're saying is this finding that we have here in quotes, in green, would just end at the word
Tall.
Tall, exactly. The proposed tower, towers will adequately, be adequately separated from other buildings over 100 feet tall, period.
Yes, that was my recommendation. The reason, and just to be clear why I don't support the following issues, that language is code language that certain people who oppose development use to argue for the blocking of projects based on views. And so I think that that's language that interferes with good project design review, and so I think that having the Planning Commission review it, the adequate separation of it, and limiting the language expressly to 100 feet tall, I think is appropriate.
I support that. Everyone else?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, we've got three of us down here. Scott, Christian, anything to say on this?
I really don't. I just keep thinking that I'd want to, I don't like undefined things. I don't like the sky exposure and effects on skyline, I, but I also feel like leaving it as adequate. So subjective, I would love to see sort of a, something along the lines of a minimum of 75 feet or, and then, you know, something like that, but I, I
So maybe something helpful in the development regulations, if adequate is something that can be appealed.
Yeah.
The consideration thing is something that is in the heads of people and is discussed, and it's not necessarily a finding that we could
Right.
A very clear decision.
No, no, I agree with you on that wholeheartedly. I just, I just think adequate changes over time, but I'm, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Wrapping my head around it.
All right. So number three, but truncated.
Number four.
Number four, but truncated.
Number four.
All right. And I think we are all done with that study session. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:23 and give us a three-minute break before our Seeing none, can I get a motion for the consent? All right, second?
So done.
I've got it moved by Member Bouders, seconded by Member Martinez.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right, I'm going to, no action items. Let's adjourn this meeting at 8:28 PM. Next up, I call to order the regular City Council meeting for the city of Emeryville, Tuesday, February 5th at 8:28 PM. We are all still here, so I don't think we need to call the roll. Can I get an approval of the final agenda?
Moved.
Moved by Member Bouders, seconded by Member Martinez.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Special orders of the day, presentation, Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District Biannual Report. Our esteemed representative, Betsy Cooley.
Well, I just wanted to welcome Ryan Clausenitzer. He's the Executive Director of the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District, and I can say that they are, they're doing a really wonderful job at keeping mosquitoes outside of Emeryville and the rest of Alameda County, and, and Ryan has been doing a fabulous job as Executive Director, so very happy to help him.
Thank you. Trustee Cooley?
Just of time, I'll be very brief. It's a, timed this out to about 10 minutes, so thanks for having me back again. I was here about two and a half years ago. I was at the Council of Mayors last year, so it was good to see familiar faces and former trustees on my board. Again, Ryan Clausen, General Manager of Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. Just an update, I provided a report on your desk, but I usually come by about every two to three years to just provide an update on the mosquitoes and the threats in Alameda County and Emeryville. So I'm just going to talk about our district, our independent special district. I'm going to speak about mosquitoes, why we control them, how we control them, how we will control them, and who we control them with. As an independent mosquito district, that means we have, every city has a trustee to our board, so that has 14 board members. We're represented currently by trustee Betsy Cooley, and that was just reappointed for another one-year term. We collect about $4 per parcel. This is from my, I live in Alameda, and this is right from my property tax bill. You can see, we have 10, nine, 10 thousandths of a percent from Adverorum pre-1977, and then we had $1.74 approved in 1983, a special tax that collected about 70-some percent. And then in 2008, we had a benefit assessment that was $2.50 with a CPI, so it could grow, but we've kept it at $2.50 ever since. The one in 2000s was West Nile virus had really increased our operational ability, but ever since then, we've had the same revenue source, minus the increase just by property price increases. With this budget the board provides us, we have a staff of just 17, full-time staff and seasonal staff. The shaded colors show where these control technicians work. This is their zone, if you will. So the technician you have in Emeryville, her name is Sarah Erst-Pammer. She also does Berkeley and Oakland, and still gets to all your needs within a day. So if you call her, she'll be there within a day. If not, as soon as you call our district, we'll forward it onto her iPad, and she'll be out here talking to residents. We also have a full molecular laboratory down in Hayward, and we have administrative staff there as well, which I'm a member of. Mosquitoes are aquatic insect, which means they spend most of their complete metamorphosis, such as like a butterfly egg to adult, within about a couple weeks, they emerge. So that's where we control the mosquitoes, is generally when they're still in the water. It's a lot easier than when they're flying around. We control them because of these pathogens. These are the known mosquito pathogens in Alameda County that could be spread by mosquitoes. We focus on the top ones, West Nile virus, if you hear, it's endemic to this area, which means it does exist. We just control the mosquitoes to prevent it from spreading. There's also dog heartworm, which emerges right about the spring equinox. They are found in tree hole mosquitoes, small little mosquitoes that live in the trees. And malaria, we need another human to have malaria spread. And then the last four are spread by a mosquito that doesn't exist in the county yet, but we are looking for it, and I'll touch on that in a bit. The two mosquitoes we do have here are the ones that do spread West Nile virus. We find these mosquitoes, this last year, we found a lot of mosquitoes that had the virus in them, but thankfully it didn't spread to humans. West Nile virus is a bird disease, so if it does get humans, it's kind of by an accident, really, but it does still, it's fatal to several dozen people in California a year. This mosquito is the small one that enters your house at night. It's a small, little annoying mosquito. It's one of the 25, 22 species in Alameda County that we find, and I just wanted to focus on these two, because these are what most, drive most of our calls in the summertime. And they're found usually in storm drains. They come out of the East Bay Mud sanitary treatment plant, so we spend a lot of our effort over there to prevent them, so they don't come over and collect their blood from Emeryville residents. We also have these mosquitoes that are marching their way up. They are the, they, these are different than the other mosquitoes that breed in large sources. These prefer the small containers in people's backyards, flower pots, that sort of thing. And they're extremely annoying. They've changed mosquito control in Southern California. You can't be outside during the day as much as you could before, because they attack at about 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, and they really come after you. And they've, they've increased the calls to the public by about tenfold, because they're quite annoying. And not only are they annoying and pestiferous, they also spread diseases which are currently not spread here, such as chicken gunia, dengue, yellow fever, and Zika. To control the mosquitoes, I don't want to get into this matrix too much, it's just that it's not just about spraying for mosquitoes. As you can imagine, with a staff of eight in a county of the size of Alameda County, we have to be pretty efficient with our uses, so we're not raising property taxes on the residents. So we do this through knowing where the mosquitoes are, how to control, making adjustments, and doing a lot of educational shows and events, such as I am here tonight. These little dots on here as part of the surveillance, we have to know what we're looking for, because again, there's 25 or so species of mosquitoes, so we need to know where they come from. They all come from distinct locations. This is all monitored by about two to three technicians in the field, laboratory technicians, and they, the little, small dots are looking for this new mosquito that's coming up. As close as it's been is Los Spanos, they're called invasive 80s. 80s is the genus, Jagenera. And when they come, we will try to eradicate them before they become established. We test these, we, we collect these by these little, and that water feature on the right, it's just a bucket with dry ice, which mimics a mammal breathing and exhaling dry CO2. The mosquito gets tricked into thinking they're getting blood, and they get sucked into this net. There's also ways of just using a cup with a stick on it and looking in the water, or they put a bucket of unclean water, and the mosquito lays eggs on it, and you can see the little black eggs on that piece of paper. We take these mosquitoes back to our lab, where we have a trained staff to test them for diseases, so we know where to focus our efforts on. And we also test them for resistance to pesticides. If we do have to do a major treatment, we want to make sure the tools that we have work effectively. So we do what's called a bottle bioassay. We put the mosquitoes in a bottle, we try different types of products, and we see if they're resistant or not to those type of products that we have. We're a small industry. There are 60 districts in California. There are 60 districts in California, but nationwide, it's not a very big industry, so there's not a lot of innovations, there's not a lot of capital invested in it, so we have to be, some of the products and materials we've been using, we've been using for quite a bit. This is from, I think, the 50s and 60s and the left, and that's us today. This is looking in storm drains. Most common source of mosquitoes in Alameda County in Emeryville are storm drains. So, let's just spend a lot of time looking. We put a little bit of mineral oil in there, and because they have to breathe, these mosquitoes, and mineral oil suffocates them, so they cannot collect air, similar to snorkel. This is out in the marsh areas. Further down south, there is some in Berkeley that can fly as well. And again, we used to lose large, these large equipment, now it's by foot. But these mosquitoes can fly about 20, 30 miles. We use fish a lot, that's most of the work we do in Emeryville, and is delivering fish to folks here that have ponds and, you know, little fountains. We'll provide fish that we rear in Hayward. These large dishes, we used to be a district of engineers, now we can, we just use shovels instead of these large cranes. And again, going up to Sacramento, speaking to folks like yourself and spreading our word through events in your city, we usually do at least one event in Emeryville and through social media. We use Tableau or PARBI, so again, we can be the most efficient, not raise the revenue. We use what we can, where we can, and move our operations with that information. The last section here is just really what the future holds for our industry and what we do to protect you here. One thing again, is we have, we first collected $2.50 as our benefit assessment, and we haven't raised that since, even though we could, just with a vote of our board, up to $7 per parcel, we've kept it ever since then. And with that amount, we've been able to work. Trustee Cooley sits on our finance committee, and has been very instrumental in having us invest with pars for pension stabilization funds, and also with having reserve funds in camp as well for capital projects and other reserve allocations. There's other, some new technologies coming out right here in Berkeley, such as, you know, one thing they can do is you can irradiate mosquitoes, you can, well, Bakia, they're doing that with Google down in Fresno, to render them sterile, or you can actually snip the gene and have gene drive technology. These are all being done throughout the world as a new kind of era of mosquito control that we're monitoring as a possibility. Working with the cities is usually the most effective route for a lot of these things. Sometimes it's just a simple design change in these, like, these little boxes in your storm drains, trash capture, or BMPs. If you just move the water, then we don't have to visit it, and we can work elsewhere. So, working with staff on some of these design changes and with the water board is very effective use of our time. We also spend quite a bit in wetlands when they redesign wetlands, if you will. We just make sure that they can be sustainable and resilient, so they can have a natural flow of tidal flow, and we don't have to go out there and disturb the area with our mosquito activities, control activities. And one way we are doing this reduction of impact on wetlands is through the use of UAS technology. About a year ago, we got this, and what it's doing is just, we're using it right now to monitor these new wetland projects brought upon by Measure AA, the restoration funds. And we can see where the water is, quantify the water that is at a certain location, so when they want to build a new project, we'll say, you know, this is a good project, this is a bad project. If you build it this way, we're going to have to go out there and do helicopters and march around it, but if you do it this way, then we can just step back and focus our attention elsewhere. So, using multispectral cameras and such to explore these very far-off and remote areas of Alameda County. And last, all these things are done with partnerships. Again, we're a $4.5 million agency, and we don't plan to grow, we'd rather not, so instead, we just leverage with other mosquito districts, with university systems, other government agencies to get these works done. The lead agency of the Chen Zuckerberg Biohub for sequencing the genome of mosquitoes, so that is one way to find out. There's a lot of diseases that we don't know yet, there's a lot of things that CDC is expecting to happen, we don't know, so we're trying to discover it here first, so we can be prepared for any, the next epidemic, if you will. In Emeryville, not really, again, it's mostly our work is just catch basins, you know, just a little bit of standing water can really drive residents crazy and get into your house at night. So, we also work in the water kitted area and swimming pools. If there's any abandoned swimming pools or unmaintained water features, we do spend some time working with the residents to get that abated. So, that's my presentation. Thank you for your time. I know it's getting late, so I will be here for questions if you have any, though, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Yes, Member Donahue.
Is the 80s egypti marching our way, or has it really been held to the Central Valley?
It's moving up. Yeah, it's slowly moving up. It's the lot, the furthest north it's made was Los Banos, so it only just takes a hitchhike ride in someone's car to make it over here. So, that's what we're all prepared for. We have reserve funds for it, because it really has changed the public health response in LA, in Orange County, and Coachella area. So, we're ready for it to happen, and we're prepared for it, but it's going to definitely be a strain on things and an adjustment.
I just think that your organization really is on it, you're actively looking at new things all the time, and it's really important that you're doing that, because climate change is upon us, and it's, you can't sit on your laurels, that's for sure.
I agree, Councilmember. Nice to see you. Yeah, I agree. We are aware of sea level rise will quite affect our work, and any change in temperature, rise in temperature will create some pathogens to be more virulent than they currently are. So, we are very aware of the dangers of any climate change we'll have on our work, so that's a good point.
Member Bowers?
Thanks for being here. I just had a couple of quick questions. So, it looks like your year-end fund balance at 2017, it was like 120% of your annual budget, which may be why you're not raising the fee on anybody, but, and I heard you say you're using a 115 pension trust fund. So, where are you at, you have 18 employees or so, where are you at with funding your liabilities? Just curious, as a public agency.
On our books, we're about 78, 80% funded. If you combine what we put into pars, which is about a million, we're more in the 85, 90 range. We, goal is to be about 90% funded, to be honest. So, we plan to put, you know, another, in our budget this year, proposed to get to about a, to that point, about 90%. I believe that the audit, the GASB rules don't account for those other funds in your, in your GASB 68 of showing you how much your pension is funded, but that's what our goal is, to be about 90%. We're that mixture of classic, we're about half and half classic and pepper employees at the moment, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming here and all the work.
Appreciate it, Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Announcement of Commissioner Committee vacancies.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We currently, on the Commission on Aging, have two unscheduled vacancies for terms that will expire on June 30th of 2021, so we've advertised those openings. The applications are due on Monday, March 4th, and the appointments will be scheduled for you to make on Tuesday, April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Any Councilmember special announcements or reports on meetings attended?
Got one.
Yes.
So, in my capacity as a director at East Bay Community Energy, I just wanted to mention what people have probably read in the papers, that PG&E has filed for bankruptcy, but they've also filed in their, I think it was called their first day filings, they wanted to acknowledge that CCAs were not going to be included in the bankruptcy filing, and that they are a pass-through for what CCAs collect. So, just wanted to let folks know that PG&E agrees that East Bay Community Energy should be funded with what we're collecting from ratepayers.
That's great. Thank you. Member Bowers?
I have two quick announcements. One is the Alameda County Transportation Commission, members from the San Pablo Corridor. We had our first briefing from staff on the progress of the San Pablo Corridor redesign, which is going to be a many-year-long project. But the regional measure three provided core funding to do some core improvements, multimodal transit-related issues, and so several high-level prototypes have been vetted with a number of community stakeholders. There will be a number of public meetings. I have asked as a member of the commission that one of those be here in Emeryville to provide feedback on changes to San Pablo, and so staff, we will work with ACTC going forward to hold a large community information meeting about the options related to the future of San Pablo. And the other item is just, as a member of representing Alameda County at the Air District Board, I just wanted to let folks know that tomorrow, we will vote to propose legislation that will be sponsored by our Assemblymember, who I sit on the Legislation Committee, and we're looking at trying to get the legislature to fund clean air centers. So, essentially, when we've had the last few years of wildfire outbreaks, vulnerable people, children, seniors, people with already existing respiratory issues, have been extremely susceptible to problems due to prolonged fire, smoke-related fire, smoke-related air conditions. And so, what we're proposing to do is actually retrofit a number of public facilities that could include schools, the senior center here in Emeryville, other places, to actually have special clean air ventilation infrastructure done on those buildings to allow them to be made publicly available during a wildfire crisis situation. So, I will keep you apprised of that as we move through the process.
Thank you. Any other reports or announcements? All right, thanks, everyone. City Managers' Report.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Any expertise communication? Yes, Member Bowers?
I had a conversation with Noreen Whedon from the Golden Gate Audubon Society about item 12.1.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Public comment for the consent agenda, consent agenda or items not on the agenda?
Okay, so I've listened to the deliberations here tonight, and all I can say is, how Emeryville? So, a developer strolls into town with a project he wants, but it's, but the rules don't allow for it, so the Emeryville City Council snaps into action to accommodate the developer. The ghost of Nora Davis is smiling down on this, in this room here tonight. She would be very proud of what the deliberations here are tonight. She was a big fan of developers, accommodating developers, as everyone probably here remembers. And that's what, you know, was being talked about here earlier, accommodating this specific But the thing that I thought was like the most disturbing was that the level of disingenuousness. You know, I listened to what Mr. Bowers said and others, and basically, what you're characterizing is, we were caught flat-footed in 2015. Like, how could we have known that skyscrapers are different than low-rise development? Like, who could have known? That is, it's like, it boggles the mind, totally disingenuous. Of course, they're different. Of course they have a different, they're more expensive to build. I mean, of course! And so, the findings here tonight, that in 2015, the, all that deliberation for a year, and that was never discussed. So, it's absurd on its face. You know, what kind of public policy are we doing here in Emeryville? So, and you're saying that we screwed up royally in 2015, and so, who, so, think about the ramifications of this. Who is to blame for that? It'd be Charlie Bryant. Essentially, what you're telling us tonight was that Charlie Bryant blew it and screwed over the previous iteration of the council in 2015, when he didn't warn the council about, hey, listen, you guys, skyscrapers are different, and you should have a different metric for them, for the unit mix. But he didn't say anything, so says you, and so, the ramifications of what you told us here tonight was that Charlie Bryant, you know, is either blew it, or maybe on purpose, but Charlie Bryant, like, didn't do it due diligence, and you guys are all naive, and, you know, he screwed you over. I just think it's ridiculous. I mean, he didn't say anything, probably, because why should he? Of course skyscrapers are different, different. So, I think there was a huge level of disingenuousness here, and I don't, I just think it's unseemly to change public policy to accommodate like a developer like this. And all I can say about it, again, is to reiterate, how Emeryville? I mean, like, it's so disconcerting, like, some things just never change. We just can't seem to get past the idea of not assuaging a specific developer who strolls into our town, who wants to make a profit. We should have our rules, should be for the public, not, shouldn't be so transitory. Thank you.
I've had a request from Member Bowers.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just as a small point of personal privilege, as someone who spoke to Nora Davis as recently as two weeks ago, I would, just for the benefit of the public, the reference from the public to her ghost, she's not dead, and I think it's inappropriate to refer to her in that context.
Okay.
I mean, literally dead.
Betsy Cooley resident. Something that I've been thinking about as this discussion has gone on before the meeting, I mean, I knew that it was coming up, was that, I live in the largest building at Watergate, and it's all one-bedroom and studios. And when I first moved in, we were almost all single people, you know, there might, there were some couples, but it was mostly individuals there. And in the last, particularly in the last five years or so, and my building alone has quite a few families in it, families, couples with several children. And, you know, sometimes you'll have families in studios, and sometimes you'll have, you know, families in small one-bedrooms. And they're not there because there's a lack of three-bedroom apartments around the Bay Area. They're there because the three-bedroom apartments, I mean, if we have a huge earthquake or Watergate burns down, I can't afford to live here anywhere, you know, studio, small one-bedroom. The apartments are very, very expensive and new construction, and so I think that if you put in a high-rise and you have three-bedroom apartments, people will move in, but they're probably not going to necessarily bring more families. I mean, our studios and small one-bedrooms have brought in, I think, more families than, you know, I think that a lot of the three-bedrooms, you're going to have wealthy people who just want to have a lot more space. They want a room for, you know, a home office, or for, you know, artwork, or, you know, whatever their hobbies might be. And so, I think that there are just a lot of different ways of looking at it. I heard what John had to say, and I, you know, I think that I pretty much agree with the point that he was making. And I was, I thought about saying something at the time, but anyway, here I am. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments for items not on the agenda? All right, consent, do you have a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, if we could just briefly discuss item 10.7, so, we don't have to pull it, but just to make one small change, if that's possible. I don't know if procedurally we want to remove it, or staff, is it better to remove it, or to just discuss briefly?
Do you want to remove it? So, we need to know what it is. Yeah.
Is it okay?
Madam Mayor, I think if the Councilmember could identify the error in the existing policy, we could just correct that.
We'll just correct something, if that's okay?
Sure.
So, on page three of the proposed policy, in item 10.7, paragraph K, we have AT&amp;T Park. And since we're updating this policy, and AT&amp;T Park no longer exists, I thought maybe we should say Oracle Park, so we don't look like those folks who didn't understand the time in which we passed this. I did read it, and I just thought we should say Oracle, since $200 million has bought it for quite a long time. That's all. Is everyone okay with that?
Only future you would catch that, but sure.
Well, that's my only change.
Like, right? Like, who else?
So, with that, with that change to 10.7, I'll move the consent calendar.
Yeah, I second.
Okay. Let's call the roll.
Give me one sec. Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. All right.
It's a good policy, thank you.
12.1, direction on the development of bird-safe building standards.
Mayor Medina, members of the City Council, I don't have any kind of a presentation for you, but there is a brief memo in your packets about this topic. You may recall that we were directed at the October 2nd meeting to come back to you for a discussion and direction on what to do regarding this issue. I will just say briefly that we did look at information from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, as well as from the Audubon Society, which is summarized in this memo in your packets. It does indicate that collisions with buildings is the second-largest killer of birds in the United States. The first largest, of course, is cats.
That's my favorite line.
True.
And a number of cities have now adopted various procedures, or regulations, or guidelines, or whatever, to address the issue of bird-safe building standards. This can take a variety of forms. In San Francisco, they've amended their municipal code to add some specific regulations about bird-safe buildings. In Oakland, they have adopted some administrative procedures at a staff level that are used in the building permit review process, and other cities, number of other cities have done various other kinds of measures. As we indicate in the staff report, there's a number of different things that we could do to address this. We could do something administrative, such as looking at each building on a case-by-case basis through the SEQA process, and... basis through the SEQA process, and/or adopting some standard conditions of approval that could be suggested for the Planning Commission or City Council to include when buildings are approved. Or we could take it a step further and amend our design guidelines to include provisions for bird-safe buildings, or one step further to actually amend the municipal code with the planning regulations by ordinance and put some measures there. Our recommendation at this point is that you refer the matter to the Planning Commission for a study session to weigh these various options, and then for us to bring back to you the Commission's recommendation for further direction from the council.
Okay, thank you. Any clarifying questions? Any public comment? Nothing on birds. Okay, there's no cats in the audience, and... I'm gonna, Member Batters, you requested this item, do you want to kick us off?
Yeah, just, all I want to say is, thank you for reaching out to the partners in the ecological space about this, and I'm sorry that Mr. Donahue left, because I had a really great response to his public comment, which is, you know, sometimes he didn't like that we were changing the law in Emeryville, we were changing this, we were creating an exception for developers. We don't have a code section for high-rises, other than high-rise signs, and the reality is, we have high-rises, and so we treat them like, we treat them in a lot of ways like other buildings, and so the reality here is, small, single-family homes, small buildings, don't kill birds quite as often as high-rises do. That's just a fact. It's actually a fact. And so here we have a lack of a rule, and so I'm proposing, for the benefit of not a developer, but for all the winged, feathered friends of ours who are dying, not to cats, but to these glass towers, because we actually don't use bird-safe design. And yes, it's great that other cities are doing it, and I'll tell you, at the Air District, we've examined how to actually promote the insulation of buildings using window treatments that also happen to have double as bird-safe, to prevent collisions and keep birds away. And since we have an estuary here in Emeryville, and we have a concentration of towers, I know that this won't retroactively apply, but to anything that we do going forward, this would provide us the opportunity to ensure that the migratory path that many birds take along the east side of the bay, here to the Crescent, is actually, we're thinking about the natural environment. So I don't have, I have a position on where I think the Planning Commission should go. I prefer San Francisco's model to the other ones. The subjective, you know, every, everything will be reviewed and specifically decided whether we do bird-safe is administrative and procedural headache for any agency, so I think that having clear standards is the key. And they're not hard to devise, and so that's where I'm at, and I just appreciate council being willing to discuss it and perhaps refer it to the Planning Commission tonight, but I think it's good we share a natural habitat with wildlife and in particular birds, and this is a very simple thing we can do.
Anyone else? Do you have a motion to refer to Planning Commission?
I think he just needs direction.
Direction. If everyone agrees to let the Planning Commission do what Charlie said, that's fine.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is that enough direction on 12.1?
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Have fun. All right, 12.2, resolution of the City of Emeryville amending the regular meeting schedules of the public works and transportation to meet jointly on the second Thursday of every month at 9:00 a.m. I don't know if we need a staff presentation on this.
No.
No, is everyone fine with this? Because it's just...
Yes.
Sorry, public comment?
I'm in.
Eh, okay, seen none.
A member of the public shrugged.
I'm with the resolution.
I'll second.
Great, we've got a motion, Member Martinez, and a second for Vice Mayor Potts.
Councilmember Batters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. All right, next up, resolution of the City of Emeryville amending the membership composition of the regular meeting schedule of the Housing Committee and amending the 1819 local roster of boards, commissions, committees accordingly. I can think maybe we could waive staff report on this one? All right, any public comment? Hey!
They waited for this one.
I just hate to watch anyone have to play to an empty room if I can make a difference. So, speaking as a member on the Housing Commission, my schedule could get a little frenetic or hectic if I have to sort of remember every other month. Eh, I'd prefer monthly, but that's just my take, so, that's it. And also, my name's Ryan Greenberg.
I apologize for such coercion. All right, thank you. Any other public comment? No? Cool. Do we have a motion on this item? Or any discussion first?
I have a question. Did we decide if it's even or odd months?
It's every month.
Oh, it's every month?
Changes it, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading, somebody read earlier that said every other month. Okay, my bad.
It was every other, and they're going to month.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll move approval. I'll second.
Great, we've got a motion from Member Batters and a second from Member Donahue.
Councilmember Batters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. All right, Department head reports, 13.1, Charlie.
Mayor Medina, members of the City Council, this is my monthly report to you on the most recent Planning Commission meeting, which occurred on January 24th, about a week and a half ago. They had one item on the agenda, it was a public hearing. It was for approval of the new final development plan for Marketplace Parcel B. As you may recall, there used to be a final development plan that had been approved for that parcel, that included a parking structure and some retail on the ground floor. The new FDP includes the parking and retail, and also 150,000 square feet of office and lab space on three stories above the parking. The Planning Commission unanimously approved this FDP with some minor modifications. There were two commissioners absent, so the vote was unanimous five to zero with the five who were present. This decision is appealable to the City Council. The deadline for appeals is 15 days after the meeting, which is this coming Friday, February 8th, and of course, this is the City Council's opportunity to appeal this project to yourselves if you wish to do so. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Was there a lot of discussion about the scale change and whether, in fact, this would be too imposing on people at the train station? There was some discussion about that, but I think the point that was made by both staff and the applicant was that this project is consistent with the planned unit development that was approved by the City Council in 2008, and that PUD does include some massing diagrams, and the proposed building is actually slightly less massive than what the PUD invasions.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you for that report. Future agenda, item request from council members. I do have one. February 22nd is the deadline for bills to be submitted for our state legislature, and I would love in March for us to do a Legapalooza review of, similar to how we did last year, of what our positions on bills are, and that is my request.
All right.
Okay.
Mayor Medina, would you like us to request Mr. DeLuca to be here for that?
Yes, please.
And do you have a preference on which March meeting that would be?
Which one is less busy?
The earlier one, the 5th?
Let's do it on March 5th if he can come. Okay. Any other requests? All right, that's easy. Well, then I'm gonna go ahead and join this meeting at 9:05 p.m.